Okay.
Okay, the meeting go order now? Yes, no?
Sure.
Minutes.
Where are they?
I don't know. There you go.
Did you get them on email?
Um, no, usually I have to go into the town thing, cause I look to see if we had a meeting tonight. I was like, I'm like.
Third Wednesday of the month.
I know, but you know, I every so often I think maybe there's like.
One, two.
But it seems late this month, it or it's uh, gosh, was that?
It is. It's the twentieth. Only around the fourteenth, fifteenth.
Sixteen. Yeah, right, cause we were the sixteenth of October.
I just trying to get the minutes now. I don't know.
Little hog in the woods he's talking about.
All he went over is.
Oh, we didn't, well, the driveway, the two driveways on one property type thing. Which I don't think we ever, we just discussed that.
There is an agenda too.
Yeah, cause that's, I did read that, I would to make sure, show up and there's something uh, wonky going on, there's some people, at least you've seen that. Uh, I prefer, I make a motion to approve the minutes of October fifteenth.
Sixteenth?
Yep.
Let's check it that.
All the, all those in favor? Aye, aye. Abode.
So on the agenda.
What's the agenda?
Uh.
My present anti map.
Yeah, which we don't have.
Did Chris tell you anything?
Nope, we still don't have it.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, so I'll have to go on for another month, and then town plan.
Which, is that what we were working on with the offensive?
Yeah, yeah, and so shh, Marie.
Maria handed everything off to N V D A, she said.
Yeah, and Z J had sent his section, so.
Okay. I saw that.
And she took my sections last time, so.
And I dropped them off in her mailbox.
Yeah, so it should be good. And then it's the um, LED traffic hazard, those are the lights, the.
So.
That's uh.
Actual, out, the side lighting. Um, here?
No, like.
Everywhere.
Oh, the LED outside.
Um, LED ones or however, yeah. I don't know, how would you word that though, like, do other towns, I mean, you can't put a, I mean, can't have people say, well, they can't put the Christmas lights out or.
No, no.
But like the spa, I get the spotlight thing.
You can't, way, I can't find it, but what I found, I can't remember if it's Concord or Saint Jay. It said, no one should cast rays of light on, onto a public highway or across property lines, onto another person's property.
Like, so did we have a complaint on this or something, or?
It, it's kind of a pet peeve among, and a lot of people don't notice it, you know, you drive, go to your house, and all you think, oh, my door yeah, it's nicely bright. Yeah, but you're not helping the road when those lights are on.
Glare.
Wow, yeah.
Yeah, and I do think, like, I know it goes around here, but when we were in our place in Florida, the neighbor, I think you can get it, he's got a motion light, and every time his dog would walk by, it shines into our place down there, but we're also close together. And I mean, it shouldn't, you know, if you have a driver light, it shouldn't impede on the other person's domain.
Right, and that's. And that's gonna be an issue, it's just like a whole thing up there on Daniel's farm road.
Yeah.
Because land's so valuable, people are selling, and we're gonna have more people clustered together, and it's gonna create issues. And this one, that is gonna be
The element, oh, that, yeah.
a mess.
Oh, that.
Cause you and I were just talking about the legality of using somebody else's right of way. How can he say, whoa, I'm gonna use that, well, he, he didn't build it, he didn't have, you know.
I just think he's gonna run into a jam as far as selling it, I mean, if he doesn't have.
Yeah.
If he doesn't have curb cut or a place to put a driveway.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, you gotta be able to get.
It's in a bad, it's a bad spot to begin with, you know.
When it comes to a land use, but, I mean, do you think, can we like, cause we can look at other towns, write-ups or whatever, if they have a section, come back with some verbiage.
For.
For the lighting.
Yeah.
We don't have anything on that, right?
No.
Cause it's kinda like, we do have a sound ordinance, right, or do we? No? Like I.
They, they were talking yet?
I don't, uh, I was thinking that, like, not like a, you know, but could be over a certain, or past a certain hour or something, or.
At one point.
You said Concord has this in, they have one?
It was either, I got it for either from Concord or Saint Gonsberg on the lighting.
Okay. Cause if Concord has one, that I would, see, we're more similar to Concord than.
Right, right. Yeah, Concord or Farneet or something like that, yeah.
Like that.
Concord actually had pretty good verbiage on their uh, industrial um, zoning and whatnot, or light industrial.
Yeah.
Alright, try say we just, I agree with.
Yeah, if we could kinda, I don't know.
I see Towne Stowe is doing something with short-term rentals.
Lots of different baby whack over there.
Oh, yeah.
I bet there's tons of those over that way.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there's probably more here than I even realized, but.
How did the meeting go, Hannah?
Uh, DRB?
Yeah.
It was good, it was quick, they got um, the most paperwork that they've gotten for STRs yet, because he used the checklist that he had made. So everything checked out, and that was just, it was just one STR application.
What's STR?
Short-term rental.
Gotcha.
I think that one.
So they approved it down there? They've gotta get out of that habit of doing things the same night.
Uh.
And think things through, they don't have to do that, they have forty-five days. I know it sounds foolish, but if they would've stopped and thought about the other one.
Yeah.
So, so, do you feel that we should make a checklist when they do a subdivision? That the DRB must follow?
Well, isn't the, isn't that what this, this floor?
The town plan itself?
Well, town plan is your, the town's envision of what is coming down the pipe, basically. The zoning bylaws is the guidance.
What they're supposed to follow.
I don't think that the DRB need a checklist from us to do stuff, but
Well, I do think.
I don't understand how they did a subdivision in one night.
Yeah.
It's always been two meetings.
Yeah.
And how it got pushed through in one is beyond me.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like, I mean, they, the people on board should have known, I mean, they don't, they have some new people, but um.
The people that have been there though.
Been there should get like, yeah.
Hmm, but yeah, I mean, I would need to do a checklist.
I, I don't either, I think that's a lot.
But yeah, I mean, it could be, if we had in there, like, every subdivision is a two min, two meeting minimum, or somebody day minimum. It gives people the chance, like, I may not know this meeting, this is what's going on, but thirty days later, you might hear about it and go to the next meeting or something, it would get the town, the people, the residents.
That's where it's always been done, is two meetings.
Yeah, yeah, just so that.
People know what's going on.
Know what's going on, it gives you, and if you don't show up to either, then well, you're out, and you can't complain that you had.
Well, that's when you define either a minor subdivision or a major subdivision. A major is three meetings. A minor, you know, but it's always been two, and, you know, they, they threw away the book.
Yeah.
In any uh, normal.
Common sense.
I'm gonna say that, but.
Yeah, wow, yeah. Yeah.
But they haven't even sold that, right?
No, well, that's, that's the other thing is, he's he's trying to split the thirty-two acres now in two, so hopefully, the DRB is going to, I told him, you got another bite at the apple, cause he wants to split it again. Which is against their subdivision regulations anyway, he's trying to sell something that's not subdivided. Which is against what we say.
Right, right.
I mean, lots of that putback there then.
Three, four, oh, if he splits that, right?
He's supposed to, he's to keep him one from south and then, well, then the house.
He can technically split fifteen lots out there.
Right, yeah.
He chooses to, that's what I'm saying is, land is so expensive, all he's gotta do is chalk it up and put a low price on it.
He'll sell it.
Yeah.
Per acre wise, and people buy a silent scene, and then we'll have a real mess.
So what's this one driveway zoning bylaw? That's only.
Okay, so, we put in that only one driveway per resident.
And this, and it's.
Basically to take away the horseshoe driveways?
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, wasn't the issue, if somebody had like a, quite a bit of road furniture or whatever, and they had a barn or branch on the same property, they would have to, wouldn't be able to have access to the road from, like our shop, I mean, technically that's one.
But that's not going to the residence, that's not technically a driveway.
Oh, just an access to the shop, cause I mean, it's on.
Oh, so that, so it's only for residents?
Well, that, that's the way I took it when we did it.
Uh. Yeah, yeah, which makes sense, that means like.
So the shop wouldn't even be a residence.
Right, that, but it is on one piece of property.
Pretty property, correct.
Right.
And stuff, but it'd be stupid for us to go in my mother-in-law's driveway, go across her garden, and then pull into our shop if we didn't have a road.
No difference than this guy down here.
But.
But it would be, wouldn't be right either, to have, to have subdivide that off, just so that they could have access to the garage.
Right, to the, to the shop, yeah.
To me, it.
But yeah, I could see a resident, like, if, that's the only, if you're going to home, but if you do have a, a garage or a barn or something.
I bet, two driveway, alright.
Right.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, cause you don't wanna have to just ride along the side of your field to get into it.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
I mean, that doesn't make, but, as you say, residential, that would make more sense to do.
That makes sense. So what do we need to do with that one, just adopt something that says only one per residence?
Well, let's.
Resident only.
What does it say? Where they look? No.
Took this, come up, did somebody have an issue, like?
This guy down here
Uh-huh.
is putting a garage here.
Yeah.
So, Chris had a big to-do about the driveway part of it, because, oh, you got a second driveway. And.
Is he the last guy on the road?
Yeah.
I mean, all of then, people just end up just driving over the grass, I mean.
Right, right, I mean, it's gonna, you're, they're still gonna do it.
Yeah, yeah, they're gonna go out onto the road, I mean, that's kinda how we would have, if we didn't put a driveway to the shop, I could see Bernard with his big truck going across his, got his mother's lawn when she was little, that way.
Letting she do that, yes.
Oh, yeah. What, right? She mowed her lawn in a certain direction, and there was no going, let alone drive that weight truck across her front of her lawn.
Yeah.
Hi.
Congratulations.
Location of all driveways are to be located at least seventy-five feet from the right of way.
Don't they still get them, the driveway curb cuts from you guys at the town?
Isn't it uh, that one?
Jimmy, Jimmy is supposed to be on site, and Chris.
Yeah. Uh.
We don't expect Jimmy to be fluent in zoning, and we don't expect Chris to be fluent in road.
Good help out.
So, it takes two people to do a curb cut, to do the measuring and all that stuff. So, the two of them are supposed to go together and do the measurements, and so on and so forth.
Could be a process.
It's crazy, crazy today.
Chris only works Fridays, and then in summer, you guys are only on four days a week, which they have Fridays off, so.
And Chris will be cutting his hours for the rest of the year because he's mostly through his budget, so he'll only get work in a couple hours for the rest of the year.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Because, I don't think he wants anything.
Christ, thought he was supposed to be at our meetings.
He is, but the select board told him that he needs to chill out because he's made his way through his budget. So he'll do what needs to be done, but he's just cutting back his hours.
Yeah, last three, four, four months, yeah. Well, we could take the money, they said we had the budget for the um, the sheriff's department.
Sheriff's.
The sheriff.
Mm-hmm, for excess.
Yeah, which I didn't know, we've had a issue with the town of water for a while though, but.
Yeah, I told you, it's just not having anything.
Yeah.
Right, it, it's all the perception of select few.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Yeah, cause our way, I mean, yes, but they're
Yeah, but, come on.
they're not, and no one's gonna be, they're like at night, and you're making donuts down on the, down on the corner, yeah, yeah, you probably there more so than me, like, you can get, there's a big truck, but other than that.
Oh, the word. But I know who it is still, it's like.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, but.
Well, you wanna write down s, three, ten, two?
What is it, three, forty-two?
Thirty-two. Prior to construction of any driveway, access will be given to um, landowner by the select board or duly appointed agent. But, I'm thinking.
So there's nothing about a singular driveway?
There is, I'm thinking it's in the state.
Oh, the bi, the state.
Standard.
Cause I remember years ago, there was, well, that house up from Lillian's house, that was a half moon one, and then they blocked it off, and then they, it got sold or whatever.
Yeah.
I think they wanted to go back, ultimately back up, and it's like, you know.
I think that's where it came from.
Something.
Makes sense that it was, yeah. Makes sense that it was, yeah. So are we just looking to adopt that, Howard?
We have adopted that.
We have.
We take the money from the state.
Yeah.
So we automatically have to adopt.
So then there's no need for us to. Change anything.
No, just like, yeah, I would think if there was a question of it.
They should be able to find that.
Figure, yeah, that was just residential. And then if someone's complaining, well, they have a second driveway going to their garage or their barn, then.
I think, I think, yes, I think that's a key point is the fact that it is.
Yeah. Then you could.
Because some people are, you know. Some people will say it's just one driveway for.
For, yeah.
For, 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 for anything.
Uh, yeah, and if you had five hundred feet of road front, I mean, you could add a lot of different things.
That's correct.
And that'd be the only guy who's.
How are you digging up that?
He's got more stuff, why don't you know what the heck he's?
Residential, you should drive it.
Oh.
See, Howard, you could never leave, cause we would never, never do this stuff.
I know, we not would have. In commercial drives.
Come March, I'm done.
Standards or residential. So there is a difference between the two.
Between residential and commercial?
Oh, sure.
Big time.
But that's what I'm saying. It, it's distinguished.
Yeah.
So if you have. I wouldn't call it commercial if somebody had a barn that they had a driveway to, but.
No, right. Yeah, cause.
Certainly not a residence.
So we could just say that at driveways, we refer back to the state's mandate on.
B seventy-one standard.
That's what we should say, yeah.
Yeah, and then put that in our minutes, and if anyone questions it, well, that's where they need to look.
What did you say? What's B seventy-one?
B seventy-one.
B.
B, B?
He is a boy.
Okay.
B is a bingo!
And where is it, B seventy-one, um?
Agency of Transportation.
Agency of Transportation.
That would be Vermont.
Oh, then. Somebody will pull up some others.
But is it a zoning bylaw?
It's a uh, residential and commercial.
State standard.
Standard on driveways.
But if it's a state standard, we would've adopted it into our.
That's all we're tr- that's all we're saying. It's our.
We have adopted it.
Yep.
Right, but adopted it into what? Adopted it into our bylaw?
Our bylaw?
Your, yes.
Yes, yep. Perfect. There.
Done.
That should be good.
Has been adopted, it'd be long ago.
Yeah. Yeah, and people don't, I don't.
Think of it.
No, I mean, yeah.
I wish I had better copy of this.
So then just going back on their thing to the LED traffic hazard lighting. I, my suggestion is that we, I mean, and I don't mind looking at some of like Concord, Burnet, see if we can find out if they have any verbiage or Saint Jay. We'll do all, I'll do, I'll do all three.
We'll do all of them. But I still think that Concord, Burnet are more applicable to them.
Yeah, and just, just come back with, if we can come up with a verbiage that, and put in there about at least not impeding on roadways or other personal.
Right.
Home, home, right. I mean, if it shines in my field, but I don't want it in my bedroom, I mean.
Well, the new LED lights. I, I've got a little one like this.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there.
And I'm, what, two hundred feet from the road? And I'm questionable, I have, I gotta get ladder out, I've gotta turn it down because you, you can see the road.
Right. Yeah. Oh, yeah, and some driveways aren't.
They're right on.
Right too far. I mean, I was thinking like my mother-in-law's, of course, the road keeps getting wider, like I said last time, and I said, if she had one on the end of her driveway, I'm sure it would hit the roadway.
Oh, yeah, you, you, all you gotta do is turn it a little bit.
Bye. Yeah. Yeah.
We always.
But.
So yeah, I, I think that's a good idea.
When Lyle and I were putting out um. Lights on people's garage. We always made sure that it was pointed down, not out.
Out.
Yeah.
And the only thing I would do is if we had worded that said, you know, cannot impede the roadway or other personal property. Then if someone complained, we could go back and.
There you go.
Sight them.
Well, that, that's, that's the next question. We can make it an ordinance.
Ask them.
Or we can make it a bylaw. An ordinance, again, just like the S T Rs. You can give them a ticket and.
Yeah, yeah.
Be done with it.
I think we've come up with something first and see.
Yeah, and then see which way you wanna go.
We're right, but. Which way you wanna.
Where do you wanna go?
Yeah, I mean, I would think a re.
This is stuff to think about.
More than likely, if you ask them nicely, most people would be like, yeah, sure, I can point it down.
Right, right.
And then if it became an issue. But like here, like she just turned her Christmas light on. My bedroom was right there.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
After a certain time, things should be, but, so, yeah. And I don't mind trying to pull up Burnet and Concord's. Whatever, stuff, just to see if I can find something, and I'll come back with it next meeting.
Perfect.
Sure. Thank you, Kim.
That'll work for you. And don't say that I'm gonna find anything, just so you know.
Just gonna look.
I might have to drive to Concord. You got a paper copy I can have. Yeah.
And draft agenda for next meeting.
So on the next agenda, we definitely have to put that flood.
Follow up with LED hazard, I don't know, yeah, traffic hazard.
Yeah, traffic hazard, yeah.
LED flood hazards?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we gotta do the flood resilience map, I guess. Um, I guess we can put any information on the town plan.
Town plan.
And then, uh, yeah. Traffic hazard, um.
What do we wanna do about, yeah, there's only, the, the one driveway's already taken care of, in my opinion.
Yeah, if we put it that, in that minutes, and we say, go to the state.
Yeah, we already have it.
And stuff, and.
Okay.
Which is right here.
The hall.
Right here. Advocate will follow the Vermont Agency of Transportation standard B seventy-one form. Standards for residential and commercial drives.
So it is in there, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Right on the permit.
Yeah.
Alright, so that's good. That's it?
We have anything else? When is our, I mean, our next?
December eighteenth.
Oh, alright. Oh, yeah, cause fall is Christmas, so.
You got anything else?
I don't know. Oh, it's like, what the heck is going on?
I don't know what to do down here.
Kind of late to be doing the line work, but.
I don't have anything else. You guys got anything?
Nope.
We don't?
Well, come on, you gotta make it worth your drive down here.
Not that far.
You were just looking to get out of the house anyway. Your wife was getting after you.
No. Alright, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Approve. Poor Hannah drove twenty miles to get here. How's new job going?